This is a great honor to introduce Dr. Stacy Torres. She is an assistant, our semi-PhD grad in the program. She's an assistant professor of sociology in the Department of Social and Behavioral Sciences, School of Nursing at the University of California, San Francisco. She grew up in New York City and is a proud first-generation college graduate. She holds a BA in comparative literature from Fordham University, an MFA in creative nonfiction writing from Columbia University, and a PhD in sociology from NYU. Her book, At Home in a City: Growing Old in America, is based on her PhD thesis. Now, if you ever thought there was a reason not to read a book, it would be if you think you're going to be reading someone's PhD thesis. That's how I went into reading this with a little bit of reluctance. But her MFA in creative nonfiction writing and her other experiences with literature, it's an outstanding book. It really is, and I highly recommend it. It has incredible insights, and it's so well-written that you keep turning the page. You want to keep reading it. We will have those for sale, Al Westbury just mentioned, and she will be here to sign them at the end of the event. Her writing for broader audiences has also appeared in The New York Times, The Washington Post, The Los Angeles Times, and The San Francisco Chronicle. She's an avid public sociologist and has explored many nuances of what we all have in common: being human, growing older, and trying to figure it all out. So Stacy, we welcome you.
Well, thank you so much, Kristi and Gary, and to all of the organizers and everyone attending today. I know Stephen King, but I did put some poetry in the book, and I have a little bit of poetry, not my own, in the speech for you, so hopefully this goes down smoothly. So, good afternoon. Thank you for having me speak at your forum today. Rather than me talking to you, I'd like to think about my remarks more as a conversation among friends, and I invite you to join me. I look forward to more discussion, sharing, and exchange during the Q&amp;A and the panels throughout the afternoon. I'm really excited about learning from them. I'm from New York City originally. It took me a long time to get out, and I mean, could you have not a more perfect California day right now? Beautiful venue. I felt so bad to even wipe my mouth on these beautiful place settings, and so beautiful. So, thank you. So, what does it mean to age in place and to age well? I think about this a lot, even though I'm 45 years old. It's like a New York Times opinion editor said to me once, while I worked with her on edits for an op-ed, I wrote about my research, about how older people preferred to hang out at McDonald's rather than their local senior center. She disliked the phrase "aging in place" for exclusively referring to older people, saying, "We're all aging in place." And she was right, and this is true. We're all aging in place, no matter our age, right at this podium, in this very room. And whatever our age, space, place, neighborhood, and community have powerful consequences for our physical and mental well-being. But aging in place is an important term, one that gerontologists and others who work with older adults often use to describe the ability for elders to remain in their homes as they age, rather than moving into an institutional setting such as an assisted-living facility or a nursing home. I'm sure you know this, but polls from the AARP have consistently found that more than three-quarters of people aged 50 and older want to remain in their communities and residences for as long as possible. So how do we make this wish possible for everyone, given vast differences in resources and abilities? Many, if not all of us, are here today because we care about taking care of ourselves and others, whether personally, professionally, or both, as our needs change over time. My work has focused on the power of place and questions such as, what is place? What is home? How can we best leverage the resources we have to lead long and healthy lives amid many challenges we confront as we get older? And how do we make a home, or many homes, in the world? So my book, At Home in the City: Growing Old in Urban America, takes up these and other related questions about how best to balance competing demands for autonomy and social connection. To understand elders' experiences aging in place, I spent five years with longtime New York City residents as they coped with health setbacks, depression, gentrification, financial struggles, and the accumulated losses of neighbors, friends, and family, and other everyday challenges. I'm trained as a sociologist and an ethnographer, which means I spent a lot of time in the field, hanging out with people, and observing how they lived their daily lives. And with the portrait I paint in the book, I hope to move us beyond one-dimensional stereotypes of older people as either rich and pampered or downtrodden and frail to capture the multi-layered complexity of late life. While many in my study struggled financially and a few did have wealth, most people I fell, most people I met, rather, fell in between these extremes. For example, here in Marin County, while you have people with great privilege and wealth, as in many parts of the Bay Area and New York City, you also have many pockets where people struggle with multiple challenges, whether financial or otherwise. This includes a growing missing middle: people who used to be considered middle class, who may even own their own home, but who now live on fixed incomes and face the escalating cost of living, including ballooning medical and long-term care costs. I think of the actor Gene Hackman's recent death and the isolation he faced with his wife and primary caregiver as an extreme but illustrative example of how even those with great privilege aren't immune to the dangers of isolation and the pressures not to burden others. They too need support from helping networks. I've also come to the conclusion that instead of thinking about aging in place simply in terms of a person's residence, we should embrace an ecological view of aging and expand our view to aging in places, so places being plural, which includes those locations that at first glance may not appear to provide vital services, but upon a closer examination may reveal a crucial web of social connections hiding in plain sight. So a place like a McDonald's or the Pete's that I stopped at right before coming here, where I saw older and younger people interacting and reading books and enjoying this beautiful day. Place can rise in significance as older people spend more time closer to home due to retirement, dwindling finances, and health problems that limit travel. As older adults become less entrenched in institutions of work and family, they must also find ways to adapt and to craft new relationships and routines. And thus, I've found, as many of you have likely experienced, that home is much more than four walls, and in many cases, the places and people outside the first place, home, can be as important as the roof directly above our head. In a culture where there is still a lot of stigma and ageism against growing older, relationships in public places may also allow elders greater standing and recognition as something other than dependent, or invisible, or a problem to solve. And not to forget, these relationships we form while sipping coffee or engaged in another activity, maybe a knitting circle or a book club, are a lot of fun. During my studies, some of my fondest and most striking memories are of how we laughed, joked, and took a load off together. Alternative social ties stand alongside and in some cases rival other structures critical to well-being in old age, such as family and home. And so thus in the book, I argue that we should devote greater attention to the neighborhood context, where we form these informal social bonds, where they blossom, and I argue that they're especially important for older adults, given the need not to overstress family networks, assuming that they have them, the surplus time for those who have had the privilege of retiring, and increased time spent closer to home due to those growing limitations such as less money to travel and a decreasing range of mobility, physical mobility, due to certain health issues. In my studies, some people couldn't walk more than a block, but because it was New York City, they were able to still find that McDonald's and get there. My book chronicles how a non-script bakery in Manhattan, a little bakery, little French bakery, mom-and-pop hole-in-the-wall place I call La Margillane in the book, served as a public living room, a third place that provided company to ease loneliness and a sympathetic ear to witness the monumental and mundane struggles of late life. Through years of careful observation, I peel away the layers of this often neglected social world and explore the constellation of relationships and experiences that Western culture often renders invisible or frames as a problem. So these days, issuing dire warnings of a crisis, a silver tsunami, or a global population bomb, I think that was one of my favorites that I saw, and I'm saying that with some sarcasm, to describe the challenges we face with population aging. For sure, we have complex individual, economic, and social challenges to tackle, and asking for and accepting help, even when it's available, isn't always comfortable for people and may carry some shame. But my book aims to strike a realistic balance as I highlight how people find support, flex their resilience, and assert their importance in their communities in old age. So what is a third place? I'm excited these days that this term is kind of gaining cachet in the media. We're hearing a lot about third places, I think especially in the wake of the isolation and distancing that we had to experience during the pandemic. And how can we transform spaces into special places to help us avoid loneliness and isolation and access other supports and services? In some cases, that might mean something as simple as installing a bench in front of a business to give customers a place to rest, linger, and exchange clothes with passersby. The sociologist Ray Oldenberg coined the term "third place" to describe the places outside of the home, so that would be the first place, and work, which would be the second place, where people gather, such as post offices, drugstores, pubs, coffee shops, restaurants, and parks. Some examples of more organized or formal third places could be senior centers, libraries, and recreation centers. Oldenberg advocates for third places, such as bookstores and coffee shops, as necessary yet endangered sites that help build community, often between people from different backgrounds. Elders in my book exemplify key demographic trends that will shape old age for generations to come. Most of them lived alone by choice and remain single, whether because they had been widowed, divorced, or never married. Some never had children. The majority of them were women who continue to face significant economic disadvantages in old age and higher poverty rates than older men. And there are a lot of reasons for that, but I won't dwell on them right now. Given New York City's unique status as the most populous city in the United States and as a global media, culture, and finance center, elders in my study may have a different intensity of experience than older people elsewhere. But they also herald rising trends such as having fewer children and multiple committed relationships over a lifetime, facing heightened economic pressures, and retirement ages. And they offer a glimpse into navigating the blessings and burdens of increased longevity and suggest that Generation X and millennials may experience such challenges even more acutely as they age, though these subsequent generations may also have different opportunities. So thus far, these two cohorts, Gen X and millennials, are much less likely to own a home due to, for example, rising educational debt and escalating real estate prices and inflation and interest rates and all the rest, yet they may also feel more comfortable meeting their social needs with virtual relationships. So stay tuned. Many residents I met lived in affordable housing buildings classified as naturally-occurring retirement communities, or NORCs. So there's this funny word, NORC, and basically, but an important word. Federal law defines a NORC as, quote, "a community with a concentrated population of older individuals, which may include a residential building, a housing complex, or an area, including a rural area of single-family residences." So where I spent so many times, so much time with my older research participants, those housing complexes and neighborhoods had not been built purposely to qualify as NORCs. They were not made for older adults, nor was their residence restricted to older age groups. But in my study, many longtime residents of these buildings and communities never moved out. They moved in in the '60s, or the '40s, or the '50s, and they grew there old over time. And New York City is a very particular setting and an outlier also in terms of its urban density. Its walkability provided elders with access to many places to gather, even as many closed due to gentrification. So many of their longstanding establishments served, you know, lower-to-moderate-income customers, and they just couldn't make it when the rent went up. But I'm hoping that even with the urban, suburban, and rural differences that shape challenges and opportunities for older adults, that we can find some common ground here today and learn from each other. So I'm really excited for the panels later on. So for example, in more rural areas such as West Marin, interventions to cultivate and sustain connection may need to be more deliberate and intentional than perhaps, you know, the older adults I spent time with who went to a little deli and knew that there were going to be some people that they could hang out with there. Challenges of rural aging include lacking medical services and having to travel longer distances for care, infrastructure needs regarding transportation and internet connectivity, safe and affordable housing, and an increased risk of social isolation. Positives of rural areas include peace, quiet, natural beauty, a more relaxed pace of small-town life away from the hustle and bustle of a large city, and perhaps closer knit bonds for longtime residents and newcomers who need to learn, rather lean on, and look after each other more regularly. The Center for Healthy Aging at Colorado State University recommends the three As to support rural aging: resource awareness, access, and availability. So the first A, awareness, refers to helping make elders aware of what aging-related resources even exist, which may be especially lacking in rural areas. The second A refers to improving access, given the lower usage of formal aging services among rural older adults, despite higher rates of chronic illness and daily care needs. And the third A stands for increasing the availability of resources, a complex effort that requires cooperation among many stakeholders, including older residents. The Village Movement offers a promising model to help fulfill the goal of creating, quote, "longevity-ready communities" by connecting local network members to comprehensive services and social activities that enable them to age in place. Founded as a grassroots, member-led, volunteer organization in Boston's Beacon Hill neighborhood in 2002, which surprised me, that's not actually that long ago, but it was 2002, the model has since expanded to include at least 268 villages across the country with more than 70,000 members. Marin Villages, for example, is comprised of a number of geographically dispersed villages throughout the communities of Mill Valley, Nevado, Ross Valley, San Rafael, Tiburon, Cortumadera, and Larkspur, among other locations. They are also entirely volunteer-run and offer income-based discounts, which is really important to encourage participation of people with lower incomes who want to be a part of this movement but may lack the funds. In general, memberships in villages still remains largely white, middle-class and upper-income, and highly educated, so that suggests we still have a lot of work to do to expand the model beyond a boutique option for a privileged view. So as Kristi alluded to before, mentioning the public health crisis of loneliness, more recently, former United States Surgeon General Dr. Vivek Murthy, who I miss, I really thought he was a champion for trying to get us all more connected, has sounded alarms about a loneliness epidemic and increasing mental distress and loneliness at all ages, but actually especially among younger people. In a report, he warned that social disconnection posed health risks as deadly as smoking 15 cigarettes a day, and urged strengthening social infrastructure and investments in social programming, the built environment, and neighborhood places such as libraries and parks. The sociologist Eric Kleinenberg defines social infrastructure as, quote, "the physical places and organizations that shape the way that people interact." And he argues, "social infrastructure is crucially important because local, face-to-face interactions at the school, the playground, and the corner diner are the building blocks of all public life and for all ages. Facilitating strong social networks and places for supportive discussion can help older adults avoid social isolation and loneliness-related health conditions, including depression, heart disease, cognitive decline, and weakened immune systems." Now, isolation is often portrayed as a problem of old age due to certain risk factors in late life, such as living alone, physical illness, and depression. In addition, social networks shrink in late life, often due to the loss of family members, friends, I'm sure many of us can think of beloved people in our lives that are no longer with us here physically, and selective paring down, so people consciously kind of trimming down their social networks, deciding, eh, maybe I don't want to interact with this person as much anymore, it's not rewarding, as well as shifts like a move to a retirement community or assisted-living facility, and the transition to retirement that many people grapple with, which can diminish work contacts. But despite these challenges, the prevalence of isolation among older adults also remains unclear, and research has also shown that older people face less loneliness and isolation than previously thought, and that social interaction and volunteering, as we have experienced today, and a shout-out to all of the volunteers here, thank you, that that actually increases with age as well. So it's a mixed picture, and I like to point that out because I do think sometimes that isolation worries can contribute to maybe an unfair stereotype, and so I think we need to kind of think about the complexity of what are the conditions under which a younger person, an older person, can become more isolated. As Kristi also mentioned, in our current moment, we're facing a lot of economic uncertainty on a personal and community level. Nonprofits are losing funding, people are losing jobs, retirement accounts are losing value, tariffs threaten to increase the price and scarcity of essential goods that we depend on, such as prescription and over-the-counter medication. Cuts to larger public benefit programs loom on the horizon, including Medicaid, SNAP, formerly known as food stamps, and potentially Social Security. As someone who's aging myself and a caregiver to a younger sister with multiple disabilities, who lives in a nursing home and who has relied on all of these vital public programs, I'm immensely concerned, I'm worried, but I'm not defeated. As a sociologist by training, especially when I feel overwhelmed, I search for opportunities for individual action and resistance, no matter how modest, to counter the massive social forces that sometimes feel like they're burying down on me, and to remind myself of my own power and agency. We can always do something, and in this moment, we have a great need for advocacy and need all hands on deck. And I have to say, I've been really inspired recently by older adults organizing locally and nationally, showing up at protests against cuts to services at Social Security offices, and protesting on behalf of younger generations facing grave rollbacks in rights and opportunities. Older people have a tremendous wealth of insight, historical perspective, and a lifetime of honing their talents and skills that can be harnessed for the greater good of this precarious moment. One local example that has been really inspiring to me is Mill Valley Senior Citizens for Peace, an organization advocating for social and environmental justice, which has rallied community members, including high school students, every Friday afternoon for more than two decades on the corner of Miller Avenue and Camino Alto Street. And so for those looking to get involved, I also think the national nonprofit organization Third Act offers a lot of really important information on next steps at their website, Through our spending priorities and choice of elected representatives, we can fortify the places that make a community a home and protect people of all ages from the vagaries of fortune. We must continue striving for social inclusivity and to retain community diversity across the dimensions of race and ethnicity, gender, class, sexuality, ability, age, no matter how distant this dream or goal seems. In my book and at this podium, I advocate an approach to collective care that draws inspiration from the philosopher John Rawls, who had this concept called "The Veil of Ignorance." And it's a classic thought experiment that requires us to consider, how would we design public policy and a political and economic system if we had no knowledge of our social or class position, we had to design for everyone? Imagine the progress we could make towards ensuring everyone a safety net if we adopted the Veil of Ignorance as a guiding principle for developing a social contract for late Putting aside our personal circumstances and predictions about where we might end up in old age when determining social policy would promote equal opportunity for everyone to thrive and thereby safeguard the interests of the least advantaged. Now, if I had a magic wand, I'd make a few key recommendations, many of which align with California's master plan for aging. The first would be to strengthen social infrastructure by investing in our small businesses and public spaces. Fighting commercial gentrification, in addition to residential displacement and eviction, would ease the pain of what I call "social eviction" of longtime residents, as I came to think about how the older people in my study negatively experienced neighborhood changes that they did not feel had their best interests in mind. They would say, oh, these places are lovely, but it's for a younger crowd, it's for other people that they're opening these establishments for. And so even though many had secure and affordable housing, they felt ostracized and alienated as new establishments geared towards a younger crowd, not them, displaced the businesses that they relied on. Secondly, we need a substantial investment in affordable, accessible, safe, increasingly climate-resilient, and supportive housing for all older adults and for people of all ages, incomes, and abilities. And finally, we must solve the long-term care crisis using a multi-pronged approach. This means bolstering a range of supports for living in the community, increasing Medicare and Medicaid coverage for home health care, and boosting our care infrastructure and support for paid care workers like home health aides and unpaid family caregivers. Growing older may be inevitable. It is, and if we're lucky enough, we will grow old. And I say this as someone who lost my mom at 52, you know, so I always appreciate, even with every gray hair that's coming in, every birthday. But we shouldn't accept chronic instability in late life or a grinding elderhood for the too many who lack a social and economic safety net, and increasingly, it feels like more and more people are in this situation. At the heart of my book lies the tension between elders' desire for connection and their concerns that too much intimacy with others might result in dependence and threaten their autonomy. This is a story about the multiple meanings of place. Place is a temporal location in time, place is a physical space where we spend time, and place is a cognitive, emotional, feeling realm. So if we live long enough, we will reach our, quote, "inevitable place in the life course," as the poet Robinson Jeffers described in his unexpected journey, or unexpected discovery, of what would become a lifelong home on California's coast. Writing, when he saw Carmel, California for the first time, "it was evident that we had come, without knowing it, to our inevitable place." Under favorable conditions, we may discover several inevitable places to belong, whether that's a park bench, a community center, a fast-food joint, maybe even this room, a college. The older adults I came to know sought their place among these options, and their convergence in time, space, and mind offered most people a path towards belonging beyond formal institutions. So these were not joiners. I always say, the people in my study were not the shut-ins, and they were not the joiners, so they were not the book club, book club members, so they needed, they really were grasping for a place that they could feel comfortable and connected. Our inevitable place in late life doesn't have to be a dark, trapped, or despairing place, but rather, I see these places in late life and this time in our lives and the life course as we're getting older as a shifting and flexible site of negotiation, recognition, and reimagining. We may not realize at first that we found our place, but over time may settle in, embrace its contradictions and its tensions, and weave webs of sustaining ties. While late life may contain difficulties, detours, and uncertainties, opportunities also abound for surprise, innovation, and connection. So I remain an optimist. Even if I'm a pragmatist, I'm also an optimist. Even if I'm a pragmatist, I'm also an optimist. "Everybody has a book," one of my research participants, who had become a dear friend, was fond of saying. "Though few of us get to publish them, we're constantly writing and rewriting the story of our lives at every age with every second, third, fourth, et cetera, et cetera act." The poet Stanley Kunitz wrote of many autobiographical themes pertaining to loss. He lived to 100 years old, and in his late 70s wrote the poem "The Layers," reflecting on the loss of his dearest friends and pondering the next phase in his life and work. So I'll leave you with a few excerpts from his poem to close out this keynote more eloquently than I can. I'm not a poet, unfortunately. So he wrote, "I have walked through many lives, some of them my own, and I am not who I was. Though so some principle of being abides, from which I struggle not to stray. How shall the heart be reconciled to its feast of losses? In a rising wind, the manic dust of my friends, those who fell along the way bitterly stings my face, yet I turn, I turn, exulting somewhat, with my will intact to go wherever I need to go, and every stone on the road crushes to me. Though I lack the art to decipher it, no doubt the next chapter in my book of transformations is already written. I am not done with my changes, and neither are we. Our lives are books with many chapters, some shorter and some larger, never final. As we continue individually to write our stories and update our chapters, what will we co-author collectively?" The last word in my book is "together," and it is my hope that everyone in this room will leave with that message today, that the social policies and the story that we write together is much greater than the sum of its parts. How can we collaborate, cooperate, and work together as a team to ensure that no one is left behind? I look forward to hearing your thoughts and ideas. Thank you so much for spending this time listening and brainstorming with me.[1104.33][1104.33][applause]
While we're waiting for the mic to get up here, I love the way you were referring to, I saw a film at the Docklands Documentary Film Festival a couple weeks ago. Which one? These minor details, turning things on, you know, who knows?
Thank you, okay, good.
I saw a film anyway called "The Experiment of Aging," and I really relate to that film now hearing you speak. One of the first questions is, will social isolation grow because of technology, and how can we prepare?
You know, it's really difficult, and I think about technology a lot, especially because I try to avoid a lot of it in my own life, my own personal life. I don't use any social media, I don't have a smartphone, and I'm not advocating this lifestyle for everyone, but it's something that I consciously tried to kind of protect my attention. But that said, I also love email, I love hearing from readers, I love being able to Zoom conference, there's a lot of important uses for technology that connect us. And so I think, you know, it's a complicated situation, and I know that there's been a lot of alarm raised, especially for younger adults and their use of technology and feeling that that has become a replacement and maybe an inadequate replacement for face-to-face interaction. So I think it's tricky, and I think one way to just think about it is for us to, you know, inventory our own digital diets. Are we satisfied with our technology? Are there ways to augment our life that can bring us closer together by using technology? Maybe, you know, joining a lecture or some kind of activity online that you wouldn't be able to necessarily access in your physical world, maybe you can't get to the site where an activity is taking place. But on the other hand, I think we have to be very mindful, and especially if we're thinking about people in our lives, maybe family members, that we give technology to, and maybe they would really just prefer like maybe a phone call, that's a form of technology, but maybe they'd like a phone call rather than a text. Maybe you've given them an iPad, like many older adults that I spent time with, and they're like, I don't quite, you know, know how to use this, or it's not satisfying. So, you know, I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all solution, and I think that technology is still really evolving. I mean, look at, you know, the kind of AI gold rush happening now, and I'm kind of concerned about that, not only because I think, you know, AI can come from my job too, for sure, if it's not already there, but we have to think about how technology may be shaping interactions even with healthcare providers, right? And so like one example, I would also think about just terms of isolation, maybe not isolation, but inhibiting social contact. I have a chronic illness, I have an autoimmune condition, and so I go to the doctor a lot. And if a doctor has a screen in front of, you know, them, and I'm not able to have even my 10 minutes of one-on-one time, that can feel very alienating. So I think mindfulness is really important with technologies.
Are you doing some studies now on intergenerational communities?
You know, I'm not. There are people that are doing it and should be doing it, and I think it's a really important point. I think one thing that is still challenging in society in general that researchers have documented is that there's a lot of age segregation or age separation in our social world, you know, that there's not as many opportunities to facilitate contact between different age groups from the workplace to other places, and that's why I think ESCOM is such an important program to kind of facilitate some of those connections. I'm gonna harness the wisdom too of a woman that I saw speak, a professor, I'm blanking on her name now, but a professor of architecture who is in a medical school in Singapore, and this was at a Stanford longevity conference that I was on a panel a couple months ago. And she said, "It's not enough, you know, to really facilitate connections between different generations, it's not enough to just put a senior center next to a daycare." You know, you have to have meaningful, meaningful interaction. And one thing that I like to highlight too, and this is why I think third places or activity clubs can be so powerful, I generally am not a fan of programs that cast anybody in a receiving position and somebody in sort of a giving position. For instance, oh, here are all of these younger people that the older people have to help, or here are all of these younger people visiting, you know, the people at the assisted living facility. Those have their place, and I'm not knocking them, but I really like opportunities where there's more of an equal footing and where people are having fun together, really exchanging in another way. And so maybe that'll have to be the next book, but thank you for that comment and question.
Okay, here's one. Is it true that older men living alone are more isolated than women living alone?
So I would say that there's a lot of data that do show that there are certain risks for older men, and I write about this in the book a little bit. It's not like, is it true? It's not a given, nothing is determined, you know, you can have, again, Gary, you're out there in the world, you're doing a lot of stuff, like this is not true for Gary, I would imagine. We don't know each other that well, but I don't get the sense. But there are certain, I think, conditions, and especially as, you know, thinking about how men and women are socialized that put older men at risk. One of them is, you know, heterosexual men that were married for a long time and are widowed often are kind of bereft and kind of lost, you know, in terms of different social relationships, friendships, because maybe their wife was the one that was the connector and who was kind of getting them out and interacting with the family, so that could be something that's challenging. I also think as somebody who, you know, who identifies as a woman and who had a lot of caregiving in my life, that women's sort of position traditionally in families has been of like caretaking and kind of, you know, doing a lot of like the work of being around the family and home, and in some ways, that protects women. The way that I put it sort of broadly in the book is that women really suffer economically for a lot of different reasons, in terms of maybe they had to take years off, you know, you get a zero year entered into your Social Security calculations if you take that time. I don't even like the word "take time off," you know, to raise kids, but you're just out of the paid workforce and into the unpaid workforce of running a home sometimes. But so men are kind of better off, you know, broadly economically, but socially, it is challenging. And so I think, thinking about, you know, the men in your life, checking in on them and trying to find ways, if they're needing some extra support, to help them form different relationships or do activities or, you know, volunteer efforts that may really be good for them and connect them to other people, is an important consideration.
All right, thank you. I have a question here about ageism. How do you see ageism as a factor in society in general in affecting, be it negative or positive, the communities that you're speaking of?
Thank you so much for that, I didn't have time to cover that in depth in the keynote. So ageism is really challenging on many levels. I mean, first of all, it hurts us all, even younger people are taking in, you know, soaking in messages, and it makes everybody afraid to get older or to stigmatize others as others when that's really detrimental to everyone in terms of health, in terms of psyche. The way that I saw ageism being especially harmful in the communities I spent time with is that a lot of it became internalized, and so people would, you know, say, well, I don't want to go, you know, I'll kind of quote one of my research participants who was a working writer all the way up until he was 93 when he passed away, a working writer, very humorous and good sense of humor, and he would say, I asked him, you know, why don't you go to the senior center? And he said, well, you know, I hate old people. I don't want to go to the senior center and play mahjong or whatever they do. And yet, he spent a lot of time in the company of older people, but he didn't feel like he was an institutional space where he was portrayed as some drowned-trod and older person that needs services, and so it can be separating, and it can be isolating sometimes too. There was another woman, so when this bakery closed, where I spent so much time with older people, they had to disperse, and they went to McDonald's, was one of the places where they went, and there was a woman who was, again, very good physical condition, she had been a former model, impeccably dressed, but had a lot of internalized ageism and insecurity. And she said, oh, McDonald's, you know, that's where the dementia club hangs out. I don't want to keep company with the dementia club. And but yet, she kept going there to visit people, which was good, you know, but she distinguished herself. So I think these separations are really dangerous, but also I think encapsulate a lot of our culture, and our culture is, it kind of ebbs and flows. On the one hand, being older can give you stature, can give you more power, we've seen a lot in the media about talk of like a gerontocracy, for better or worse, you know, older politicians. But on the other hand, people can be written off as being obsolete, and I mean, you feel anxious, like even now, I'm letting my hair go gray, and I'm like, letting it go gray now, will I always let it go gray? I don't know, because I'm a product of the culture as well, so, but I'm trying to become just more comfortable with myself at every age.
I think, unfortunately, I wish we could talk with you much longer, but it's time for a quick set change. Thank you, Stacy, so much.
Thank you, everyone.[1789.21][1789.21][applause]
And I'm sorry we couldn't get to all of your questions. We're gonna do a very, very quick set change now as we get ready for panels.